Village of Salado. Board of Aldermen's meetings, Salado Municipal Building 301, Stagecoach, Salado, Texas, February the 20th, 2020, 6:30 PM. Call out on the agenda, the City Secretary.
Hold me a bell?
Here.
Mayor Precious Preciousman?
Here.
Alderman Jankert? Alderman Cole?
Here.
Alderman Togge?
Here.
Mayor Blansett?
Here.
Yes, Your Honor, I'd please to ask Mr. Bob Crawford to come forward to lead the invitation. I'd also like to ask his granddaughter, Ms. Ellie Mecher, to come up too. And Bob's gonna lead the invitation and she's gonna lead us in the pledges tonight. We're gonna let this pack take this. Bob's been resident of Salado for about the last, uh...
What?
...twelve years. Ms. Ellie is a ninth grader at the Salado, a member of our s- our state tournament cross-country team. Uh, she's in basketball and very active in the Salado First Baptist Church.
Word.
Lord, we thank you for today. We thank you for the opportunities that we have had, covered, and freedom to choose people to lead us. We are representatives. I pray, Lord, that you would give us wisdom tonight. I pray that you would take care of us as we go throughout this week, or that we would look to do to you and all the things that we do. We thank you, Lord, for your love. I pray that you would guide us and direct us in your will. Amen.
Thank you very much. Pledge allegiance to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag.
On the Texas side, I pledge allegiance to any Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Motion to adjourn.
We do not have any citizens comments, so we'll start the consent agenda. There may be before you. I'll entertain the motion.
Motion to approve the cons- the agendas as... the consent agenda as presented.
A motion has been made, accepted. Discussion?
Questions?
Question has been called. All in favor? Raise your hand. Oppose likewise. It's time for the village administrator to make his report. Don?
Yes. Yes, Madam Mayor. I will proceed accordingly. Uh, we'll get to some just a few items. First of all, status report on the wastewater project. Uh, while the connection deadline fast approaching, you know that's the end of the month, approximately eighty-four percent of the properties with improvements in initial service area are not connected to the wastewater systems, so the numbers pick up significantly. Uh, the village staff will be meeting with owners of Sonic and other adjacent businesses in that area early next month to discuss the possibility of extending wastewater service to their properties. We're updating some cost estimates for them, and there seems to be a pretty strong interest among those property owners at this point. Uh, the village staff is preparing dis specifications for the acquisition of an odor control system for the Royal Street lift station. Uh, board authorization to seek bids will be requested at the March 5th meeting of the Board of Aldermen. I want to correct something that is circulating around town, and that is the reason we have an occasional odor issue at that lift station is because of some type of design flaw, uh, to the point where we need to look on our insurers, our engineers' insurance to try to recover any costs we incur by trying to deal with that. And the answer to that question is absolutely not. It is not a design flaw. Lift stations have odor, treatment plants have odor, uh, and when you have odor, you try to address the odor depending on how serious it is. Uh, we have a periodic problem with that lift station right now, but we're gonna do what we can to try to do a, a strong job of killing that odor at that plant. Uh, but it is not a design issue. It's functioning the way it should function. This is just something we're gonna try to see if we can make it a little bit more acceptable for the neighborhood from an odor standpoint. Uh, so you know we've got bond funds available that we can use to go towards the purchase of that odor control system. Status report on the Main Street project. The contractor completed work on the replacement of the Rock Creek Bridge culvert and reopened Main Street ahead of schedule, in fact, about a week ahead of schedule. Uh, some finished work still remains, obviously, on the size of the, the bridge and the culvert structure, but it is open and it's functioning like it should. Uh, it will not require the closure of Main Street as far as any additional improvements that need to be made to that bridge. Uh, sections of curb and gutter have been poured between Salado Creek and Thomas Arnold. Uh, curb and gutter work will begin near the intersection of Royal and Main Street late, late, late next week. They'll do much like they did in that one section from, uh, Thomas Arnold to the creek, and they'll come in and they'll put some asphalt down as the foundation for that curb and gutter, and then they'll roll through the curb and gutter. If you were aware, if you had a chance to witness that work, uh, it went very quick. Uh, the machine is pretty amazing. You're gonna find the sidewalk will go down even quicker now that we have curb and gutter in place. Uh, work on the installation of drainage strip is winding down. Just a handful of lateral crossings are left to complete from the north end of Main Street. And Tex Scott has confirmed, I know we've had some inquiries from folks, Tex Scott has confirmed for us that the decorative light poles that are gonna be installed will have outlets at the base, uh, to allow for added seasonal lighting, which I think is a, a good thing. Uh, status report on sales tax collections. The February 2020 sales check is in, uh, representing December 19 sales. Uh, totaled some seventy-one thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars, up about thirty-five percent compared to February 2019. Uh, actual collections were up about thirty-three percent, uh, compared to February 2019, so again, not many audit adjustments as far as that figure goes, so we're seeing some true sales figures. Uh, fiscal year-to-date, sales tax collections totaled two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars, up about eight percent from the same period last year. And fiscal year-to-date, sales tax collections represent about fifty percent of the FY 2020 sales tax revenue budget at the forty-two percent mark in fiscal year. Since Main Street construction began, uh, we told you we're gonna continue to track sales tax collections, uh, and it looks like we're running about eleven percent ahead of the prior year, uh, during that period of construction. Status report of the 2020 general election for Salado. Election day is Saturday, uh, May the 2nd, 2020. We have two candidates, uh, who are vying for mayor, three candidates, uh, vying for two Alderman positions. The deadline for a candidate to withdraw is five o'clock tomorrow. So if you're having those thoughts, you have until five o'clock tomorrow, uh, to fill out your paperwork and submit that, or your name will be on the ballot. Speaking of names on the ballot, a drawing to determine the order in which the names of candidates will appear on the ballot will be held on Monday, February the 24th, at twelve o'clock here in City Hall. Uh, candidates, you do not have to be here if you don't wanna be here. You're more than welcome to be here, uh, if, if you wanna be here. It's, it's really an event that we have to go through, uh, you'll participate in it if you're here. If you're not, then, then we'll figure out a way to fill that gap, but it will be a very, very dramatic process. Early voting will run from April 20th to April the 28th. Uh, keep in mind, new voting equipment will be used in the election. Lastly, I wanted to point out actually two things. Uh, I wanted to point out that we have received notice, uh, this week from the folks at Sanctuary that they are prepared and they're willing to move forward with groundbreaking. In fact, uh, the ground will be broken on Phase One of the Sanctuary development on Monday, March the 2nd, at ten o'clock. That's Monday, March the 2nd, at ten o'clock, on the Hanks property located at 600 block of Royal Street across from Methodist Church. Probably about a fifteen to twenty-minute event. Uh, members of the board are encouraged to attend. Uh, members of the public are invited to attend. Uh, Phase One of Sanctuary development involves the development of a hundred-and-ninety-four acre tract, land that will consist of approximately a hundred-and-ninety residential lots. As you know, the residential development is part of that issue's development that is governed by terms of a development agreement approved by the village in 2016. So, again, they are boardroom-bound, they're moving forward with the development, uh, you can mark that calendar, mark that date and time, and, uh, you, you again are invited to attend. And the last thing I wanted to bring up is something that, uh, I think that, uh, the community needs to understand as well as the board. Uh, we received a letter today from the Texas Municipal Clerk Certification Program, and I'd like to read this letter. It says, "City Secretary Court Clerk Karen M. Hartman completed her required professional education for recertification as a Texas-registered municipal clerk. She was awarded her certificate on January the 30th, 2020, at a gradual luncheon held in conjunction with the Texas Municipal Clerk's Election Law Seminar in Crisco, Texas. Our keynote speaker for this year's luncheon was Carolyn Webster, the Assistant City Attorney for the City of Austin. As an officer of the city, Karen makes every professional and personal effort to keep up-to-date legal and administrative duties. Cheating recertification confirms Karen's commitment obviously to the city. Certification and recertification are neither easy or automatic. Original certification requires successful completion of approximately two-hundred hours of individual home study, a four-course curriculum in attendance, and eight two-day professional development seminars. Recertification requires seventy-two hours of classroom instruction and a selection of additional education options, which may include college-level courses, certificate from CPM, or facilitated book discussion with independent comprehension assessments. UN City Councils should compliment yourselves for your support of your city officers and their efforts to be the best as all possible as a public official." So I wanted to read this to you to let you know that, uh, being a city secretary is, is more than, than what a lot of people think. Uh, Karen does an awful good job for this community. Uh, she puts in an awful lot of time on her own from a professional development standpoint. This city is very lucky to have a registered city secretary. That is not very common. Uh, it really is kind of a pinnacle achievement in this profession, and, uh, we're grateful and we're glad we're here, and we feel this community's gift to have her as our city secretary. But I just wanted you to understand the letter we got.
Are there any questions for Don?
I got three and a half questions.
Okay.
Uh, the first thing, is there any update on the Texas Hall thing? I'm ready to think a lot.
Not at this point.
How about the update on Royal Street Smith branching over the run of water lines? And my question is, at what point do they have to start assessing impact?
Uh, their clock is ticking, uh, as far as that situation goes. They were given a commitment letter for wastewater, uh, and they've got, uh, limited time to start development. They, they performed the first major function of that development, and that was going through the animation process. Uh, they have been forwarded the design plans and costs, uh, for the wastewater line extension so they can make a determination as to whether they want a contractor to do it, and pay the contractor whether they want us to do it, and reimburse this. We're awaiting that decision from them, but clearly the, the clocks in, in their court at this stage are beginning.
And also, is that a little bit, would that be the same process for the Sanctuary? I mean, I guess I'm what I'm looking for is...
Yes.
They start running pipes, when do they start paying the bill?
Yeah, they'll, they'll start, they'll, first of all, again, depending on how the, how the situation works, uh, who builds it. Uh, their, their, their commitment letter spells out in detail at what point they will pay, uh, for the, the impact fees when they come online. The service has to be available and accessible, and then they'll start paying on their impact fees. Sanctuary, the same situation. The Sanctuary is governed maybe a little bit differently through the wastewater agreement, section of the Sanctuary Development Agreement, but the large purpose and principle is the same. Uh, you know, it, it comes at a time of plating and development. Yes.
Are there any more questions?
Don, the Main Street project, that has been so much question, this is the comment. Down, as you're on the, on the west side, as you're headed down towards the bridge, it's like right in front of the Maquis, the Baptist Church, there is a drainage culvert that they have built there that the slope of the road is going down, but the culvert is a square of... And it, it look, every other culvert along the road is taking the shape of the direction of the road, but that one there, it looks like it's twice as big as it needs to be, and it looks like it's not, you know, once they're changing the slope of the road, it's gonna have it faster. It, it doesn't look right.
Well, they're, they're going through a process of modifying those culverts, those inlets at this stage of the game, uh, so that's why you see they've come out around those, and they're making some modifications for those. But the roadway probably will be a little bit higher at that location, and it may take a little bit of a jaunt more towards, uh, Sarper Beach, but, uh, it's, they're, they're not in it.
Just looking at another note, and it just looks...
It looks a little higher, yeah. Be careful around those culverts where they're doing those work, those inlets where they're doing their work, because, uh, we notified it today that the, that their safety fence had come off, and literally, if you'd been driving the edge of the pavement, you would have gone into one of those, probably not come out of it. Uh, but, uh, they went out and made adjustments on that side.
Uh, Don, no more questions offensive from what I've been hearing.
Sure.
When is the Sanctuary development started impacting Royal Street?
Uh, we, we've had discussions with them when they notified us this week of the groundbreaking plans. Uh, they are fully aware of the fact that we're not gonna see any construction traffic, and we're not gonna accept any construction traffic on Royal Street or Salado Oaks, and that they're gonna be using, uh, a temporary exit out of 2068 for their construction traffic, and they're aware of that. Um, they're obviously looking, you know, for emergency exits on, on Salado Oaks, which was one of those items that was discussed back, I guess, when the agreement was approved, but not a regular exit in Salado Oaks, and certainly not construction, practical plans. So 2068, and that's something we're gonna write her on a police call, because I can tell you, if Royal's not gonna handle that construction.
Mr. Don, uh, is there a way that we can put a, uh, bar chart or something that shows the capacity of our wastewater treatment plant at this time versus, so we can sort of track out how, how close we're gonna get to, uh...
Sure.
...when we reach in full capacity?
Sure. We track that, we can certainly show that in chart on that, without a problem.
Are there any more questions?
All for me, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for all of your... We're moving to the control of the...
Yeah, what we'd like to do is, uh, our auditor is here, as you know, since that, that time of the year is audit season, uh, and we have completed our, uh, annual official review, and, uh, Phil Bond with our, uh, independent audit firm that you all contracted with, uh, several weeks ago, is here tonight to present the report. You were presented the packet in advance, uh, or a copy in, in advance in your packet, and you have a clean hard copy and photo of you along with the man for the letter that was presented for you as a two, so with that, I'll turn over to Bill, and I can go to him.
Thank you, Don. I'm just everyone's favorite agenda item, definitely mine, so happy to answer any questions. There was a few problems when I passed them out, so no problems now. But I'm just here for your benefit, so please, any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I just have a few highlights I'm gonna hit, and you can follow along if you'd like. First of all, good opinion, which is what you want. Uh, our job is to test the financial statements and tell you whether or not these numbers are good and reliable, and we've done that, so these are good numbers and reliable. Uh, we did a, we audited your financial statements under government auditing standards, which requires us to look at some, uh, your compliance areas. We also have to report if we found any significant material deficiencies in your internal controls. We didn't have any of those. Uh, we came prepared to do a federal single audit this year, and management fully expected us to, but once we got here and looked at what you actually spent on the grant and when you spent it, we didn't meet the requirements to, so we didn't have to do a federal single audit this year. That saved the city some money. There's a letter that companies, this report looks loose, that says, "The communication with those charged with governance." This has some required communications to you guys, since you're not necessarily involved in the day-to-day of the audit. It tells you whether we have any disagreements with management, difficulties working with them, uh, any significant areas that you might wanna be aware of. Uh, the only thing that's very particular in here is, uh, there were some changes to the prior reports. We need to get it kind of up-to-date with some of the new accounting standards, so there were some changes to the beginning balances, and those are included in this annual report. Other than that, just not much of a particular note in that letter, but if you haven't answered any questions, uh, you had some on that, and interrupting any time. Uh, on the actual financial statements, I just have a few pages, so if you wanna follow them, you can, or you can just listen. Towards the back, on page forty-four, is your general fund's budget actual. I see some footprints, so I'll be able to get there. So this presents in columnar format, which your original budget was the general fund, your amended budget in the second column, the third column is your actual results for 2019 for your general fund. And below this top section are your revenues, uh, one-point-two-five million in revenues for the general fund, which was within two thousand dollars of your amended budget, so very close. On the expenditure side, you spent one-point-one million. Uh, you were just under budget in total. There were a couple of lines that were over budget, which had to do with the police vehicle. Uh, you had a lease for that vehicle, and there's a little bit of delay. I think you were probably budgeted a year before than hit this year, so that, those lines were over, but overall, you were still under budget in total. So your general fund for nineteen had a surplus, uh, kind of the fifth line down of a hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand for 2019. Just below that, you'll see there's a transfer out, a hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand. That's definitely to supplement your wastewater fund. About forty-eight thousand of that was to the Stagecoach, which you decommissioned last year. That was to completely wipe that out. And another hundred-and-twenty-eight was to your new wastewater treatment plant to subsidize the operations that first year until everybody gets on board. And I understand, uh, Don's told me that you're close to getting to break even now that work customers are on, so hopefully, uh, it'll be able to cover its costs in the future. That's the goal anyway on the way these twenty segments present. It's presented as if it's a business operation to cover its own costs. So bottom line, the general fund, you ended the fund balance at a hundred-and-one-thousand. Uh, the best way to try to evaluate whether that's a good number or not is usually to convert it into a number of months of your operating costs in general fund. Uh, general rule of thumb is three months is kind of the danger zone. You don't wanna go below that, and it kind of leaves you vulnerable to, uh, some kind of disaster that you were anticipating, and six months is considered healthy. You're at eight months, so you have some cushion in the general fund. I know your 2020 budget is expecting you to dip into that a little bit, and you can weather that and have plenty left over in general fund. Your general fund's in, in good shape. Page two of three. Uh, it's on page fifteen. So the first column, the general fund that we just talked about, and the next two columns are your other two governmental funds. The first one is hotel tax. Uh, you'll see that your revenues of two-seventeen beat your expenditures of one-sixty-seven, so you've added to your hotel tax fund balance, and it has a hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand left in it, which is a little over one year of cost, depending on, uh, assuming nineteen was a, a standard year. And then next to that is your debt service fund, which brought in just under eight-hundred-thousand and spent just under seven-fifty on the wastewater bonds debt service. But the debt service fund, bottom line, still ended with a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, and you can use that to fund future debt service, or help, use it to buy down the tax rate to help, uh, on some of that burden for taxpayers. And then the last page is the, the big one, that's the wastewater fund itself, and that's on seventeen and eighteen. So eighteen is the operations for that fund, and this top line, total revenue of thirty-two-thousand is a mix. It's part of the old Stagecoach fund, several months of that before it closed down, and then just a few months of the new wastewater project. Uh, obviously, that is not enough to cover the operations for the first year, and that's why we saw the transfer of the general fund to help subsidize it. Uh, it also has depreciation on the operating expenses, so that's what that is, is your actual depreciation, is where you capitalize it and you systematically write it off. It's not cash that's left, so you don't really need to fund it from a, uh, operations standpoint, so it makes it look worse than it is, but hopefully you'll be able to, to balance these two out next year, that's the best I can do anyway. Uh, below that, in the non-operating section, you'll see the, the big number is the loss on disposal of the Stagecoach system of one-point-one million. So this is before my time, but my understanding is a few years ago, you donated that system and it's put on the books at an estimated fair market value. Since it's been decommissioned, it has to be removed off the books, and so that's that, that loss that will continue, uh, in future years. So bottom line, until you find you're left with two million, and so if you flip back to seventeen, that two million, uh, one-point-two of it is tied up in your, the long-term asset and, and debt for that utility system, and eight-hundred thousand is left over that you have available to you. Most of that is leftover bond funds, and as Don referenced earlier, that you could use for some of the, uh, additional capital costs or debt, uh, buy down between lines, so that's kind of it. That's all I wanted to touch on, really. You have a healthy pension fund, your fund's actually overfunded, so your team rest is in good shape, and your contribution rate's only about six percent, and you've got a lot of cities that have done all that, so you, you don't have a big unfunded liability hanging out that you gotta worry about. Are there any other questions you may can clarify, or go slow, or...
On the wastewater treatment plant for the Stagecoach, it was valued at one-point-one-million?
It was a little more than that, because it's a few years of depreciation on it. That was what was left on the books.
Okay.
And, uh, do you remember, Don, how that was valued? It was only my time, before my time, so...
I was, I was thinking, like, sixty-five thousand.
I think that's gorgeous. Is that, is that a paper loss, or is that a real dollar loss?
It's a paper loss, because what happened when you took the system, somebody had to come up with a number...
Yeah.
...to book it as an asset, so they just said, "Well, we'll pick," I don't know what the number was off the top of my head, but let's say one-point-three million. Said that's what we think it's worth, so they put it as an asset, which wasn't really money or anything, it was just, here's a system we have, and then you depreciated it for a few years, and then when you decommissioned it, you had to get rid of that number, so it's, it's, it's something you created, and then you got rid of it, so there's no...
This is a one-time, one-time hit. We won't see this again.
Unless you wanna get rid of the new one and do another one in a few years.
Not, not if we're depreciating it, probably.
Hopefully you'll use it for a long time.
Yeah. I mean, so what's the depreciation schedule on the new system? Because here we're depreciating a hundred-and-forty-three-thousand, that's a lot of the budget to go on debt.
Right, and it's, it's, it's put in service this year, so that's not a full year, so it's gonna go up. I don't have a total number off the top of my head, but I think it's, it's most likely a forty-year life, and you're at ten million, so...
Forty-four thousand, yes.
Yes. I'm dependent on my calculator now, I can't kind of do that math.
Two-fifty.
It's two-fifty a year, so this one-forty-three, so it'll probably go to two-fifty next year, which again goes back to your paper loss, so it's not something that you necessarily need to try to get from your rate payers. It's just gonna look bad, because it's gonna look like you had a loss on your books as you have that ten-fifty thousand dollar depreciation.
Yeah, the whole time it hurts you, is if you really, if you decided to close it, and if you had to, well, you know, depreciation's back then, so...
And that's not a straight-line depreciation on the new plan, is it?
It is straight-line.
It's a straight-line?
Are there any more questions?
No matter.
One, one, one moment.
Over.
I, I was remiss in saying that, uh, your staff was very helpful to us, and there were some changes to the prior years I mentioned, but the, we found the footbooks to be in really good order, so I think the financial statements you're using on a monthly basis are pretty reliable. Uh, I think some of the issues we had last year were just in preparing an annual report, but I think some that you need to be concerned about on a day-to-day basis, which is evident of the fact that we didn't have any recommendations for them, and I think they're doing everything that we would expect them to do, per se, to size, so I think you're in good shape.
Oh, were, were there any gap changes that occurred in this year's financial...
Uh, there were...
...audit that, that hit us that we weren't expecting?
There were some changes we implemented that, uh, that changed a few years ago, but nothing new this year that was implemented.
Any gap changes coming up next year that we can open up?
Not next year, but the year after. There's a lease standard that's gonna require, if you have any leases, you gotta put them on books, which is gonna get a little airy, but, uh, luckily you're nine-thirty years in, so you have until the year after, or twelve, or you wanna say the year after, but this year, and, so you'll, they'll, they'll go through the pain first, and then you'll...
You'll see your private sector too, the lease...
Yeah.
The lease changes coming to be happened, very much.
And we will have, we will have a couple of after leases to hear from.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate everything, and we hope to continue that.
Thank you, Bill.
This is the youngest mayor you'll ever see.
Don, when is the last day for writing this?
Uh, that was already Monday.
We...
You missed it, Monday.
Well, it's not me that's missing, this young lady right here, we could've put her name in there, she done it. Excellent job, you really have, and if you were a mayor running against these two guys, you could beat them just over two...
And Mayor, and Mayor, you can resign, and the board could appoint her.
I just made to the rest of the... Can I just say to the rest of this?
We're going to pick up now with number four, public hearing and possible action. Hold public hearing and consider approval of the second and final reading of an ordinance of the village of Salado, Texas, regulating the dedication of park land for new residential subdivision fees in lieu of dedication, parkland standards and construction standards for parkland improvements, providing for severability, repealing conflicting ordinances, and providing for findings of fact and effective date and proper notice and meeting. Are there any questions to that meeting before I call for a public hearing?
Mayor, do you want me to do just a brief overview?
Would you please?
Right, it's the same ordinance we talked about at the last meeting on our first reading. Rather straightforward. We have currently a minimal parkland dedication ordinance that applies to new developments coming in to the city. It does not apply to the E T J. This particular ordinance first and foremost would modify the dedication ordinance to incorporate the subdivisions in the E T J as well as in the village. That's number one. The, the other thing this does is it, it updates our fees relating to parkland dedication fees in lieu of. It also establishes a couple of new fees, of course, and probably the most notable new fee is it sets in place a process to collect a park development fee from any new subdivision coming in. Previously, you had the ability to, you know, collect a fee in lieu of, and then the thought process is that, that, that dollar would be banked in a separate fund that eventually spent on the development of, of parks or the acquisition of parkland, but not necessarily funding the development of parks. So recognizing the void that exists, the whole goal of this process is to minimize the impact on the existing taxpayer. So it only makes sense that you set up, number one, a dedication process that's, that's reasonable as far as land dedication for parks. And if they're not willing to do that, you set up a process where there's a fee in lieu of, that there's a basis for justification. But you also set up a fee to result in the development of that park, you know, be it on the parkland they've dedicated or give the developer an opportunity to develop their own and get a credit back for the park development fee, which is required for all subdivisions. It's rather straightforward. I think it's a positive step. We have a basis for our fees. Or in the past, we didn't have a basis for our fees. These fees, the thing to keep in mind is these fees are meant for development purposes only. They cannot be spent on maintenance. They're meant to develop parks in certain quadrants in the area where the development is occurring. There's a limited time that the bills can hold that money and, and take care of the developments. If they don't do it within that time, money goes back to the developer in that situation. So with that said, mayors, for you for public hearing and second and final reading.
Questions to Don, please.
I have a question for you, Don. When somebody begins to move a development, they have to declare the parkland on their plot plan, right?
Yes, sir.
So at what point do they decide, or do they have to decide, they're going to develop or not?
At the time of submission.
Will that be the final plot submission?
Yeah, well, it'll be, it'll be part of the, yeah, that we will. The way the process works is whereas we don't have a system in place right now to do this, this ordinance would establish a system where there would be a pre-submission review meeting. And in that meeting, the developer would come in and lay out where they plan to propose that land. We'll analyze that land and see if it's acceptable to the city for the standards that are set forth in this ordinance. And if it meets the criteria and is comfortable with it, they then will put that on their plat that they file with us and we'll go through the process. We'll collect any fees from them at the time of the filing of the plat, the recognition of the plat.
There'll be a barrier.
Right. And, and there's still, the thing to keep in mind is there's still a variance opportunity. We will discuss with any ordinance and that is if a developer is hard-earned with the amount of the fee or wants to propose something different, they come in and they'll, they'll have the ability to go straight to you all. You all can discuss how you want to deal with that variance.
Are there questions, please? I'm about to come out of this session and walk into a public hearing. Let me say this before we go there. Public hearings is an opportunity for you to speak. There'll be three different times. I will do this, first reading. And you can come up, you talk, three minutes, begin with your name and your address, and then speak to us because we're the ones that want to hear it. Not that they don't. We're the ones that vote on this. So that's the way we go. Number one, anyone who would like to speak for our audience, this is your opportunity. Number two. Final call, number three. For coming out of the hearing, we're going back into the regular session of the Board of Alderman. The time is seven, six. And Kara, we started at seven, four. It is before you. Undertaking the motion.
I'd like to make motion to approve the ordinance as written.
Question has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Question has been made and seconded.
Question?
Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand please. Opposed, pass. Number five, discussion and possible action. Discuss and consider possible action approving the village of Salado, Texas, basic financial statements and supplemental schedules and independent auditors report for fiscal year ended September thirty, two thousand and nineteen.
Mayor, we just need an action from the board accepting the report.
Are there any questions that you'd like to make to Don concerning this? And I'll undertake a motion. We adopt the auditors. It's our second. Discussion.
Question?
Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand please. Opposed, likewise, passes.
I just want to say that was an excellent report. I was very pleased with that. And thank you for your care and you personally really pulled this together really well.
I, I think that this year, and I, I only had experience with the previous auditor for a year or two. But I will tell you that I think this is probably the first year the city has had as comprehensive an audit and as strong of an audit. And I, I think it's encouraged, you know, and I think that it's very comprehensive. That was exciting part of it. But thank you.
And the final piece of business that we have, discuss and consider possible action regarding those properties in the initial service area of the Salado wastewater system that failed to connect to the system by the February twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty connection deadline. Don?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from discussion and action on this item as we are leasing from a company that apparently has not made a move towards connecting to it.
Very well. Now, the secretary, would you please put that Alderman spokesman has exclusive.
Mayors, we mentioned the connection activity has picked up considerably. We're about the eighty-four, eighty-five percent mark of properties with existing improvements in the area that are connected. That leaves about twenty-nine properties with existing improvements located in the initial service area that are not yet connected to the wastewater system. To break down those numbers, two properties have permits pulled and they're working to connect as we speak. Fifteen properties have inquired about connection, but have not yet pulled permits. We've talked to plumbers and property owners in some cases and property owners in some cases, but fifteen in that category. We've got seven properties that we feel have justifiable hardships. They're either waiting for a backordered equipment as far as the duplex pumps. They're, they're waiting for some determination regarding potential relocation of taps due to, you know, disputes between landowners. There's, there's also a couple of easements that are being waited from some private properties at this point. So we think there's, there's justifiable hardship in their cases. They've expressed a total willingness to connect when those issues are resolved. And that's seven of those individuals. And I've got five properties that have been unresponsive and have made no movement to connect. And so it's before you tonight to decide how you want to look at this. I know Alderman and the tanker raised this issue and it was our intent to bring this to you at this meeting to give you established support because the end of the month is, is the deadline to connect. And this board is taking a pretty hard stand from, you know, from a standpoint of coming on board. And I guess you've got a number of options to look at. I mean, you could say if you're not connected, you can take the hardline option. If you're totally not connected, anyplace not connected, you know, regardless of hardship, regardless of no movement, regardless of partial movement, you know, we're going to go and start enforcing the mandatory connection ordinance. You could look at other things like right hardship, you know, variances on those situations. You could, you know, give, give those that have expressed, you know, at least movement in the direction of the time. I, I don't know. It's just really your call from that standpoint to refresh you what the penalties are for not connecting in the wastewater ordinance. There are criminal and civil penalties. First and foremost, the ordinance establishes the authority for the builders to connect the subject property to the wastewater system and then place a lien on the property to recover the cost incurred connecting the property to the system. That, of course, is a measure of actual resort as we talked when we adopted this ordinance. As far as the criminal prosecution goes, you can file charges on them and you can go into a court environment and make a determination through the court environment if there's a violation. If there's a violation, then there would be a fine that would assess to criminal fine. It would be assessed to one hundred dollars a day for each day the property is not connected. You all in your adoption of this ordinance put a cap on how high those fines could collect as far as the sum goes. And I believe it was the desire of counsel that was put in the ordinance was that the sum of the criminal fine should not exceed the amount of the impact being determined for that particular lease of property that may be found in violation. There are civil remedies. You have the ability to go to court and get an injunction to try to force compliance. You have the ability to seek a civil fine. The civil fine would be as fine if not less than fifty dollars or more than a hundred dollars for each day not connected. And much like the criminal fine, you place the cap, and that is the sum of the civil penalty should not exceed the amount of the impact being determined for the subject property. So those are your penalties for not meeting the deadline. I think we wanted to bring this list to you to give you one opportunity, one more opportunity to, to go through it and figure out how you want to address these, these last few properties that we have to connect.
Very well. Questions to Don concerning this?
Don, on your list here, you've got fifteen properties that have not even pulled permission.
They've inquired.
Okay, so then you've got five that have made no movement.
Right. And when I talk about inquiry, a number of those properties, we talked, we had initial discussions with the property owner and then we have subsequent discussions with plumbers. I will tell you, some of these folks have not pulled permits yet because they're, they're having difficulty lining up plumbers to meet it by the end of the month. But they've indicated it may be March before the plumber's going to be available to come in and do it as we're hearing for some of them. Not all of them.
Okay, then, then you have five that have made no movement.
Yeah, those are.
So would it, would it be proven then to, could you demand from the fifteen that a letter of intent to connect? I guess we're trying to sort out, I think we're going to throw the hammer down because the taxpayers, they, they don't have the option not to pay taxes. That's what bothers me about this. I think we've been nice enough on this. I don't think it's time to throw the hammer down and say this is what you're going to do and this is what it's going to cost. I think that's the path we have to stay on.
You know, my suggestion, I'm, I'm just kicking out an idea. I admit it's y'all's call, but you asked the question, so I'll say it. So I mean, you've got some people in this town that have jumped on this system. It probably was a very difficult decision for them to go on this system from a financial means. You know, the lodge, for example, I mean, that's a difficult push on a lodge. You know, you've got some others that, that have the means to generate the revenue to help cover those costs and cover those costs who've jumped on the system. So you've got some folks who've bit the bullet and have done it and did it by the dental. And I think that's, that's what you're saying. And I think we, we, at some point, we've got to draw the line.
Yeah.
You know, with this list. Yeah, with your, with this list you're looking at, you know, if, if you were to ask me what, what might be a suggestion, you know, clearly I think the five, I think what we should do is we should contact the five the next day, like tomorrow. Try to contact those five one more time. And try to physically contact them and not just through writing, via email or whatever. And see if we get any movement from them at all and let them know the deadlines faced with them. Seven hardships I think are given. I think you've got to give those folks an opportunity to, to get through their, their issues. As far as the fifteen, I mean, there are, there are different ways you can deal with those fifteen. Time, you could say, get a letter, a letter of commitment from them, so, so what? I mean, you know, you'd be better off saying notify them that they contacted and they have a certain number of days. If they don't do it, we will take action. And not we may, but we will take action. And then as far as the two properties, those, those folks are in the, they're in the chute and they're, they're in the road yet. I mean, but really, I guess the big issue is those fifteen and how you want to handle those fifteen. I can tell you, one of those fifteen is going through some significant engineering to try to figure out how they can connect as they've got multiple properties they're trying to tie in to a couple of points. And then they're looking at some significant costs and to pull that off. They're close, they're anxious, they're, they're committed to connect, connecting. They're just working through the engineering piece. They're the only, they're the only one that I know that has had to go through engineering in the connection process.
So, so really we're not, we're not in any position to do anything yet. I mean, if, if we've got, you know, if we've the fifteen, for example, we're kind of caught in between, well, yeah, we're getting there and we're really not there yet. This is what we're trying to do. But then we have the five that, that made no movement at all. So how, how, how are we going to separate the fifteen? How are we going to categorize that fifteen and say, you guys have gotten compliant up to twenty-nine, so we're some kind of good faith?
Is that what you want to do? What is?
You need to define.
Yeah, you need to define the good faith. And that's, that's the key. You need to define how to show good faith in general, right then, relief.
Of the fifteen, what, what is required in pulling a permit? Do they have to have the engineering? Can they pull the permit and go, hey, we're pulling the permit, but we're still waiting on engineering? Is there a cost to that permit to them?
No cost on the permit. If we, we stretch them, come in and pull a permit. And if you have a permit, the clock starts ticking on the permit. And you have the ability to expedite the timeframe on that permit for connection if you so choose. You can do that. So what you might do is require them to come in and pull a permit by the end of the, by the end of the month. And then give them sixty days or something after that date that to be connected or else.
And then in the case of the one with the engineering issues, if it gets towards the end of the sixty days, you can sit down and come pull a different permit. Because here's where I am. I mean, at least they're communicating where they are and what they're trying to do.
I think you come in and claim a hardship is what I think you do and just basically see the variance.
So if they come in and pull it, if they apply for a permit, what would be the standard time to get things underway?
I don't think I give them more than sixty days. They've had a year.
Is that the, is that the way it's with you? So permit went that way?
No, no, permit, the permit, the permit took them a lifetime. They don't.
So with that, with that same methodology, applying to the five, would make that a little bit wrong?
I think what we would do is your, you, what you would do is this, what I would suggest, because I think it's kind of merging what I was kicking out, what Rodney's kicked out, the idea, is the five, you direct us to contact those five between now and the end of the month and let them know if they pull a permit. You get a plumber, they've got sixty days to get on board. And if they don't, and I mean, they don't, they don't respond to that at the end of this month.
So can we put a caveat? Okay, let's say you pull your permit, okay, and you've got sixty days. If you don't commit, it's going to be much worse. You've got twenty-nine, you're already that much in the red.
No.
What happened?
Because you have, you have the ordinance, you have a connection ordinance that you can, that you can do. And let the ordinance penalties apply. You're kind of hitting them in the, in kind of a case of double jeopardy, really.
Well, it's, it's like, you know, when you. Well, it's like, you know, when you make no movement, what's the word?
It's kind of like the thought process. Why? One idea that got kicked out was if they don't connect by the end of the month, we know what their wastewater bill should be. So, tell them they can start paying their wastewater bill until they get connected. And then they'll hopefully realize that they need to get connected so they get some work to pay. And I don't know how much of a motivator that would be.
But procedurally, Don, right now, we have an ordinance, and it's written, it doesn't have any gray area, and it is black and white, twenty-nine. We're going to start assessing liquidated damages or whatever term we want to use.
To vote of the board.
Right. And so, if we're going to change it, or this will be the fourth time, third time or fourth time they change it?
We've been doing it, I think, three times at least.
And this is black and white right now, but, and then we're going to add some gray area. And even the hardships are not written into our ordinance. I mean, it doesn't recognize what a hardship is. It doesn't give the village administrator any kind of leeway. I mean, you're just...
That's why we're, that's why we're talking to you.
Okay. And your recommendation is that we change it?
My recommendation is that you look at this, not change the ordinance per se, but you're granting, you're addressing the unconnected properties at this point and how to deal with them, okay? And you've got seven properties that have hardships. They're, so they're ready and willing once the hardships are resolved. You've got fifteen properties that have inquired about coming on board. You've got two that are in the process of connecting. You've got five non-responsive. My recommendation would be this, and that is you direct us to contact those five properties that have been unresponsive immediately and advise them that their deadline, remind them that their deadline is coming up, you know, and they need to get connected. And if they say, I can't do that in a week, that at that stage in the game, I think we need to decide whether to go ahead and pull the trigger on them or to throw them into that category of those fifteen that we might potentially give relief to.
They almost have to be thrown in the category of fifteen. We can't have them understand. And that's what we're creating for you. You guys got to be advised.
Well, there's a difference. There's a difference between those two groups. One set of group, or one group, we've had property intercontact and plumber and property intercontact in many cases. So, they're moving in that direction. They've been in discussion with the village. They just haven't been able to schedule the plumber by the timeline where they've not pulled the permit and started that process.
We've been operational since August?
A year now. No, April.
It's been April.
March, April, when we came online.
And now have trouble scheduling a...
Because they waited until then.
Well, that's not our problem.
So, Mr. Mayor, no action results in just staying the status quo the way they're trying to be?
Everybody gets filed on every month if they're not connected.
You want to make that a... I'm not, I'm just saying, I'm not, I'm not, I don't think we need a motion. If, I mean, if somebody sees a change in what we're going to do here, the motion's required. It stays the same. It's already been adopted. It's already implied. The only part that needs to be done is the instruction to our city manager to contact the five. I need to contact the fifteen and say, look, do what you got to, pull a permit. Let's get this, let's get this service going.
Is the thought process, if they come in and pull the permit, how long do you want to give them to be connected if they pull a permit?
I mean, that's the part that needs to be determined as we look at reasonable in this environment in this time of year. I mean, you know, sixty days, you're up from February, so you're going to February, March, April, into April, it'll be your sixty days. What's the weather going to be like? How heavy is it going to be? What's the, you know, eighty-four percent have...
Stepped up to the plate.
They've stepped up the plate, done. So, twenty-nine represents the only sixteen percent, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, eighty-four percent of the plumbing's been done, sixteen percent's left, so...
Well, then, maybe, maybe we just have to pull permit by the twenty-ninth?
What happens if they pull a permit on the second and twentieth?
It's after the deadline.
I mean, what happens? So, so they come in and pull a permit, then we got a...
Permit's not hooked up to the ordinance, it's hooked up to our system by the...
Well, sixteen percent are, it's not going to happen in another week, so... Right?
I've always had a problem with this ordinance, and there's a question coming. Is that, Don, in the ordinance, there is nothing that gives you any latitude to work out if someone has engineering problems, or somebody has, can't get the plumbing their problem. And I've been diligently working it. There's no wiggle room for you to work out a solution. And I've had heartburn with that because, you know, it's from day one. And because you, I just don't think we can blanket everybody out there and require them to do this because everybody's got their own story. And so, the question is, should we put some wiggle room in there for you to be able to work in and keep our businesses and residences hooked up as quick as possible and get income coming in so that we're not running up a O and M bill on this, on the sewer system?
Okay.
That was, that was a question.
I would have no, I would say this, I have no problem at all with you granting, granting me that ability. I would say establish somewhat of an angry for that ability because, you know, it's one of those situations that I think that from a fairness standpoint, people need to understand what their expectations are. But I don't think there's a problem doing that. I will tell you that what we found in talking to these folks, you know, we've talked to many of these fifteen, for example. We've talked to many of those folks in several games. They're actively involved in the process and are in our interpretation. But what we found is they're all dealing with the same plumbers, and the same plumbers, hence the scheduling issues. Plus, as you mentioned, Rodney, I think the weather and things like that have to start to give in the play right now. We have one duplex system that was going to get installed this week, so we're going to stop. So, I don't know that, you know, I, you have, you have the ability to come in and to address these individuals as you see fit based on their situations, you know, or you can just live by the ordinance, which is very black and white. It's, it's...
Too black and white.
Yeah, it's, it says you're connected. And if you're not connected, this is what we have the ability to do. We've agreed in that ordinance that clearly going on somebody's property and connecting it is the last resort. And I don't think any of these properties we're dealing with at this stage in the game on this piece of paper are in that category. I don't think, I don't think we'll ever get to that point with these folks. These five, you know, I hope these five are just in the cave, you know?
Well, can we do this, move on back to changing the ordinance the way it can try to accomplish? Should we give you the authority to make the best judgment if you're connected?
I, I think we, I think it is important that you, that there's, that there's light at the end of the tunnel. And I think that you've got to define that comfort level that you have as far as how much time you want to give these and let us forth within those primers. Translation, if those five, for example, when we try to contact them again this week, if they still are non-responsive, you know, I think the direction would be that if they're not connected come March one, it's showtime for those individuals. And as far as the other situation, visit with those folks and say, and give the five, if they contact us back, the same opportunity you're giving the other guys to pull the permit.
Pull the permit.
But the kicker is, how long do you want to let that permit linger?
I just can't.
Because it's, yeah. And I think that's the, another sixty days, another ninety days. How much longer do we get the can down the road? I guess is where I'm going.
Well, for a problem, like a plumber's and plumber's, the primer pumps and those other pumps, sixty days probably will be a maximum. I mean, if they have legitimate reasons that they cannot get connected, that's totally fine. I get it. But when you ignore the process, that's nice of them. That's really...
So, I say, what do you have it?
I'm sorry.
It's pull permit by the twenty-ninth, you have to show good faith. Sixty days later, you're not connected, you're going to pay the price. That's the best we can do. And we're leaving it up to you, and give these the authority to twist ours or whatever we got to do. And we were changing the ordinance, which is going to take another month, and they have to.
I don't think you want to change the ordinance. The ordinance establishes penalties. It's just how you want to apply that ordinance to what you're deciding. That's a public decision.
Pull permit by the twenty-ninth, that's going to be a show of good faith. Sixty days later, you're not connected. So, do we, do we give Don a laugh to determine the number of days of permit based on the complexity of the plumbing's needs and desires?
Yeah, I think that's...
You know, because, I mean, some of these may be, you know, I thought you were saying that permit may be accepted, but there may be three or four of these that are complaints that it's like, you know what, I know what you're dealing with, I know your plans, I see what you're doing. Okay, here's, here's, you know, a ninety day, or whatever it is to give them the timeframe and the need to get, get it done.
If they have a two-foot pipe, you got sixty days.
I agree on that. Sixty days, sixty days, standard, and in special case situations, try to order it.
But everybody has to have a permit by the twenty-ninth. I think that's a given.
Which means they will have to have a plumber who's registered with the village, you know, and it's...
Is that true?
Yeah, it is true.
Okay, then I think that should be gospel.
But before it comes gospel, it's called communion. It's a hallelujah.
I mean, I'll be honest with you, I don't buy the fact that there aren't enough plumbers to do it. There are plenty of plumbers to do it. Obviously, I want to stop local first, but the local guys are busy. There may be no other choice but to go outside.
Don, with all the things that you've done, are we asking too much?
No. Just going to get this done.
All right, take a motion, please.
I'd like to have an entertaining motion to have everybody permit by the twenty-ninth and give Don a word of his way to bring this home. I mean, the...
Sixty-day window.
Sixty-day window.
As a standard, as a standard deadline.
Or for any hardship with these spaces.
Yeah. But they have to have a permit pulled by the end of the month, or the village staff should proceed with it.
If they don't, we'll hold it in the month. Does this require a motion? I mean, this is already a rule, other than...
Yeah, this, because you're going, you're going a little bit beyond, you're going outside the primers a little bit. So, you have established deadline for the connect, which is saying it is...
I'm going to second that motion, just to do some discussions.
All right, the motion's been seconded. This is actually...
See, Don, right now, the ordinance says at twenty-nine midnight, we start counting days and we start assessing the penalties.
The ordinance, the ordinance establishes a mandatory connection requirement. You extended this connection date. So, you have a board vote that did the extension. You have an ordinance that tells you how to deal with people that don't meet the connection requirement. You extended through board vote the connection requirement.
So, what I understood him to say is that we're going to give you the authority to contact these people, and if you're not happy with the progress and that they're being genuinely suing this, then you have the option to delay the day-to-day penalties, is what I heard.
Not the day-to-day penalty. You have the option to delay filing charges on them for not connecting. Court will determine what the day-to-day penalty is on. Those are criminal service penalties.
So, that's the motion right now?
As I interpret the motion that was, that was just made, is, the motion was that those who are not connected shall have at least come in and pull the permit by the end of this month. And when they pull that permit, they are to be advised they have sixty days to connect from the day of that permit. And if they're not connected by that date, that we will proceed with court action per the ordinance and the penalty set forth in the ordinance. And that the village staff has the flexibility to deal with those situations where a hardship might exist where they can't meet that sixty-day window. Is that a good way to sum it up? Rodney's it?
And I wish we could have some way that we could go in there and just to show people that we're trying to get this sewer system up and working, that on day one, the twenty-ninth, that we start making them pay their bills based on what their anticipated use is going to be. Because I don't think we need to give them a free ride anymore after three of these extensions going through. So, I don't want to, I don't want to change the extension. I want the funds to come in to the, to the village to pay for our operating costs. Would that have to be an additional amendment?
That would, that would probably, that would be, you're letting a fee, and then by letting a fee, would require an ordinance of some form or fashion and some modification. Your point makes a lot of sense because you're starting to cover your cost in that case. You know, you could, what I was thinking is, could you charge them? I don't think you could charge them that fee, but I was wondering, could you charge them a permit fee? But I don't think you can. I think you're kind of stuck with your guidelines.
Your fee is a service fee. You're not providing services. You're merely saying, here's what we think you would have used it, you use the service, but you're not technically connected with the service.
You don't get any of the worship money.
So, and if you're going to fine them for not connecting with the service and you're charging for the service, you can't do both.
It's double jeopardy.
It's double. Double, double. So, either fine them or charge them service. Do one of the two, but you can't do the other.
I think the only means of charging them a fee at this point might would be if you chose for some reason to abort the cost-free permit and have them submit a fee for the permit. But I think you're going to be challenged on that.
Okay, so anyway, we're looking at like two months or twenty more, twenty days?
How much money are we looking at?
No need to worry about many.
Oh, I, you know, I think, I guess, what do you mean, money and monthly service revenue?
If these people don't, his question is where I understand it was, if these people don't pay and we do go the penalty route, what's the estimated cost of that penalty that we collect?
I have to go through and calculate each one based on where they are in the process.
It's not a big issue, though.
I don't think it's going to, it's not going to balance your question.
Yes, and I'd like to not make this so complicated that we're all trying to figure out things. We've got that motion out on the floor right now. Discussion, is there any more discussion that you'd like to have on this? Do you understand what you're, what you're going to be voting on?
Yeah, I understand. Next meeting on the field, can we have a list of who falls into which one of these categories? I mean, this number's going to change up until the twenty now.
They'll, they'll, they'll do that. I will tell you that we can get the information. We need to be careful that we're not publicly shaming people.
Shaming the person, I don't know.
Yeah, we can, we can visit.
Or maybe have a detailed...
Well, you're going to get updated on this on a regular basis.
At the end of the day, I pay in taxes for them to have the service and that piece, so you have the right to...
Well, if, if the five people that have not even responded, don't respond, we just give them another sixty days.
By this move, that's what you're doing?
Yeah.
But, Don, that's all. That's it. Sixty days is all there is?
Just they don't pull a permit.
Unless they have a really good... Sixty days, if they don't pull a permit, if they don't pull a permit, they're...
If they don't pull a permit by March second, they're history.
They're history. They're in the mix.
And that's what the ordinance says. We've already got that.
The other twenty-four are somewhere in a mix where they're doing something.
Yep.
But those five, if they're unresponsive even after that point in time, and I'd make an effort to contact on twenty-nine of these.
No, we are.
Other than the two.
No, we are, because I think you've got to. I think, here's the deal. If any one of those fifteen have not come in and pulled a permit by the end of this month, they get filed on too. Anyone who has not pulled and had to permit it by the end of this month, we're taking court action on it, is what I'm hearing.
That's exactly right.
And so, it's only ones that get the sixty days to connect is ones that have permits and they're truly working towards connections?
They have permits.
Okay.
Have to have a permit.
And then they have sixty days upon the date of issuance of their permit to come online.
Question?
Question, ask, you're asking, raise your question or you're calling for a vote?
Calling for a vote.
Okay. Question has been called, all in favor, raise your hand, please. Opposed, likewise, opposed.
Got your first, thank you. He's not grossing.
Before we, uh, adjourn.
I don't think he's got a good one.
Okay. Let's go ahead, yeah? Don, read the name.
The addendum basically is consider action regarding the proposed lease purchase of a patrol vehicle for the Salero Police Department. Don, you got your first? Mayor, members of the board, uh, this item is on the agenda to, uh, look at replacing the police vehicle that was totaled on the interstate a few weeks back. Uh, last month, the Salero Police Department's twenty-six day Explorer was hit by a passing motorist on I-35, we talked about that. Insurance adjusters looked at that, declared the vehicle a total loss, and the village's insurance carrier issued us a sixteen thousand seventy-five dollar check for the vehicle. Uh, recognizing the need to replace the vehicle, we saw proposals, uh, regarding the lease purchase of a new patrol vehicle for the police department. Uh, after reviewing the proposals, uh, we are recommending the village acquire its twenty-twenty Chevy Tahoe from Caldwell Country Ford and Chevrolet. In addition, the staff's recommending the insurance proceeds be used as a down payment and the vehicle acquisition be financed through Covering Capital Corporation, three years at a cost of seventy-four fifty-four a year. At the end of the agreement, the village would pay a nine thousand one dollar to purchase the vehicle. Uh, the funds would be pledged, obviously, in the FY twenty-one and twenty-two budgets to make the substantial payments. Uh, should you choose to move forward with this approach, just like the last vehicle we did, we need you to adopt the exact resolution, uh, which is pretty straightforward. We have the ability in this particular deal to hide out the cost, uh, as opposed to the last one where we did make a down payment. So, as I said, our recommendation is that you approve the lease purchase as a permit.
Questions to Don, please.
Any questions, so the truck's at a cost of forty-seven dollars, well.
And thereabouts. It's about the same cost.
Fully outfitted or?
Uh, it's outfitted for the most part, uh, yes, comes with, they have overheads, it'll have basic life package on it. We obviously have put some other equipment into it, avoiding the scavenging and they can, we're probably going to have to buy a few pieces of equipment for nothing taken.
Then pretty much on par with the first one, cost, you're okay.
And the great thing about this is the delivery of this vehicle is, we, it never fails, every time we go to purchase a police vehicle, there's a strike. Uh, that's why it was the delay we talked about at the last time. And in this situation, we amazingly got this, this one back, when they told us it was going to be a three-month wait, we got it, they're back in about thirty days, forty-five days. This one, they're telling us it'll be about fifteen or thirty days.
Can you do a K D R last one?
Yeah, November. Yeah, November.
Any other questions, please? I would have ten relations. Over to the group, I have a list card. First question, eight and second, discussion?
Question.
Question has been called, all in favor, raise your hand. Don, what's the oldest, what is?
We have one, she's the oldest, probably about three.
Hmm, yeah, it's probably going to be the one the SROs brought in, and I didn't go about that, but then, and fifteen, thirteen to fifteen, something like that. You bought in the last three years, this will be your third vehicle you bought. You bought pickup, uh, two years ago, you bought the Tahoe this last year, this year actually, and then this. The Explorer, I think it was a sixteen.
And I can remember, and every one of them, but all, and they all had over a hundred thousand also. So I congratulate this board and the Royals for serving on it, because we've got a great police force and we need to take very good care of them. And part of that is having a good car that can stay up there.
Mayor, I think the board's dedication is putting together a vehicle replacement fee, uh, that you funded earlier in the budget cycle also helps, because it seems the money.
Oh, yes, John, it does. Well, folks, uh, I wish there were more people here tonight, but I'm sure that you will agree. I've looked over, I know the candidates that have decided that they want to run either for mayor or for all of them. I know all of them. And I want to congratulate them, and I want to congratulate you for putting their civic duty up front. Whoever you choose, they're going to be great. Whoever they are, they're going to be great. And I, I can almost say with a hundred percent assurance that they love this town very much. And whatever they're going to do will be done for the goodness of this town. So I congratulate you, I wish the candidates well, and again, Salero is always done. Will continue to be the best village in Texas. Now, this is in German, is our motion to adjourn.
So, look, your second.
Let's go home.